Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 2, 2023, regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board. I'm glad to see everybody coming out on this nice spring evening. I'd like to start our meeting, as always, with a roll call to establish a quorum. So I will start with Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Amanda Souza Vieira. I don't see Amanda yet. Adam Raposa, present. Peter Bramanti, present. Janice Gomes.
Present.
Christopher Shriver.
Here.
Patricia Hilton is just coming in. And I'm Stu Hardy, the chair. So we have eight of nine members, and perhaps Amanda is still on her way. She did not contact me to say she would not be here, so I think she may still be here, coming. So I would like to begin with the item number one on our agenda tonight, which is Seco Partners LLC. This is the crematorium at number 730 Main Road, Tiverton. It's -- we are continuing the public hearing on this matter from our April 4 meeting. And I'd like to start out by very briefly just listing or citing for the record all of the written documents that have come in to the planning board, which the planning board has and which the planning board has reviewed. These documents have come in since the April 4 public hearing. So we now have Massachusetts Code of Regulations relating to funeral parlors and crematoriums. Next, a Massachusetts court case relating to a funeral director who attempted to operate a crematorium in the state of New Hampshire. Next, a cover letter from Dr. Robert Bishop, who lives at number 81 Lee Shore Lane, Tiverton, dated April 5, and a large document dated April 7 describing the potential negative long-term health impacts of airborne pollutants from a crematorium. And this is actually an updated version of the March 20 document, which we should also all have, and it includes three additional tabs. We have also recently received Dr. Bishop's resume or curriculum vitae. Next, we now have the onsite wastewater treatment system permit approved by Riedem for the applicant's proposed building. Next, we have a memo dated April 29 to the planning board from legal counsel, Todd Romano. And this is a response to Attorney Stephen Seipol's request made on behalf of Tiverton residents against the crematorium that the planning board convert the application from a development plan review, which is under our zoning Article 20, to a major land development. The memo concludes not to convert. And again, this is in response to, I believe, two now, two documents that we have received from Attorney Seipol requesting that we do convert from Article 20 to major land development. Next, we have a memo to the planning board dated just April 2023 from James Maloney, who is president and CEO of Pharma Cycle LLC. And this is discussing potential negative human health impacts from crematorium air emissions. Next, we have a memo from David Del Cesto, Riedem Supervising Air Quality Specialist, to Sherri Marshall, received by the planning office on April 27, responding to questions about the air quality permitting process. Next, we have an email from Barbara Lamagna, Miles Avenue, dated April 29. Next, we have two emails from Jamie French of 48 Craig Avenue, dated April 26 and 27. And just yesterday, I believe, we received a letter from Robert Gahl of 199 Lipus Road, dated April 27. We also have a memo from Ashley Sweet, including draft findings and a draft decision. And we also have a memo from Nathan Michael, our consulting engineer, dated May 2. So that is what has come in as of today that has come into the planning office and been distributed electronically or in hard copy to all members of the planning board. And I believe we have been reviewing this material. I'd like to -- actually, I neglected earlier to introduce some of the other people up here at the high table. So I'd like to introduce Ashley Sweet. You probably all know Ashley by now, our interim town planner and administrative officer to the planning board. Sitting next to Ashley is Todd Romano, our legal counsel. At the end of the table is Ed Rotella, our land use clerk. Rick Rogers, I don't see Rick in the audience, but I'm sure he will be here later on. He comes to almost all of our meetings. He is the DPW Director for the Town of Tiverton. We also have Nathan Michael with us, our consulting town engineer with the firm of Weston and Sampson. So having said that, I would like to go back to the agenda item number one, application the crematorium. I'd like to call on the applicant's attorney, Mr. Lynch. Mr. Lynch apparently submitted a large document to the planning board late this afternoon, which obviously none of us have seen or been able to review. And I'd like to ask him why he provided that to us so late. Keep keeping -- Keeping in mind that these materials should also go to the general public for their review and their comments in the context of a public hearing, which we're having tonight. Our public hearing has been continued from our April 4 meeting. So, Mr. Lynch, could you please explain some of the materials that you have now provided us? We have been requesting those for not weeks, but months.
Mr. Chairman, most of the documents, and I had submitted a letter, about a page and a half letter as well, later this afternoon, that was a response to Ms. Sweet's memorandum to the board, which we received yesterday afternoon. So I think most of the information that came in from Narragansett Engineering is a response to the issues that were raised in the planner's memorandum to the board. So that's the timing. I know one of the issues that came in was the Phase 1 survey, which had just been completed, I believe, within the last week. And I can have Mr. Hingerani and Mr. Mallow respond to that. So that just arrived. I know one of the issues that just arrived a week and a half ago, maybe, was the DEM septic approval, which we submitted. But most of these responses are coming up just in response to the planner's memo and some of the issues that were raised in the memo addressed to the board.
I don't recall -- Ashley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see anything in your memo that I hadn't seen earlier, weeks earlier, actually, of materials that we were still looking for from the applicant. So the applicant is basically saying that they had no choice but to provide us with material on the last minute because they were surprised by a request for information.
Mr. Chairman, that's not what I stated. I think one of the issues that I referenced was that my response to the board was in response to some legal issues that were contained in the planner's memorandum as the standard of review that this board has to deal with. So I received that memo yesterday, and I filed a response on that today. And that's the page and a half letter.
So I'm going to ask Ashley to comment.
The issue of the letter from the fire marshal was raised previously in a memo that had outlined deficient items that the applicant was being asked to respond to. So that is not a new item that they're seeing for the first time in this memo. The other item that was submitted was the Phase 1. That's a checklist item that would have, should have been submitted early on in the application process. That's not -- I don't even know that I raised that. I raised the issue of an ERS, which still hasn't been submitted. And I think those are the three items. I'm just looking back at the -- so there was a -- and then there was a response to the Weston and Sampson letter from Nathan that was outlining the LID issues, and that has been an ongoing back and forth with Weston and Sampson requesting more information and the applicant responding basically with the same response, and then asking again for more information, and then again the same response. So those are not new issues.
So the issue that the planning board needs to decide on now is whether or not they feel that this additional information should be officially received today despite the planning board's subdivision regulation requirements that material be presented to the planning board three weeks in advance of a meeting. Should it be -- has the applicant made a strong enough case that this 100 pages worth of materials should be received today? Because if we do receive the materials, ladies and gentlemen of the planning board, we will be forced to continue the public hearing to our June meeting. And we will --
How much more time do you have?
And we will be required to request an extension of the time clock, and we will not be able to make a decision, as we had all hoped, I think, to make, based on the comments that I heard on April 4. We were all hoping to be able to make a decision tonight. And so I am going to, and I'll ask legal counsel if it is appropriate to poll the members at this time to see if they would, if they feel that we should accept this material. If we accept the material, then we need time to review the material, and that means that we have to go on to June, maybe July. So is it appropriate for me to simply poll the members of the planning board to see what they're, how they would like to handle this, whether they think a strong enough case has been made to accept this material and then to continue our deliberations to June?
Yes, it is appropriate to poll the board.
Okay. So I will start with our usual list of suspects here with Rosemary.
No, I'm not at the end. Start polling from the end.
Okay, all right. So I will start with Adam. So Adam, yes or no, should we accept the material? If we do accept the material, it's over 100 pages. It came in at 3:00. I haven't even seen it.
I didn't even hear what it's in regards to, so I don't know what I'm being polled about.
The material Mr. Lynch just explained to the board and to the audience that the material that came in this afternoon about 3:00 in the planning office, which none of us have seen, relates to issues raised by Ashley Sweet. In her memo, you have her memo, she raised issues about deficiencies in the application, informational deficiencies, information that we've been requesting. Ashley's response, I believe, and tell me, Ashley, if I'm mischaracterizing your response, is that the applicant has known about those information requests for a long time now, and there is no need for him to then suddenly drop a bundle, 100-page bundle, in our lap on the very day of our meeting when he could have had this to us a week, two weeks, three weeks ago. Because these issues have been percolating for a long time. I know the LID issue, I remember raising the LID issue four months ago. So a lot of these issues have been kicked around already. So that, Adam, is -- and if we do accept this material tonight, a court of law would expect us to continue our public hearing to June, to give us time to review this 100 pages of material. So if we made a decision tonight, the applicant could say, hey, I gave you 100 pages of new material. You didn't even review it, and now you've made a decision.
So in my opinion, the applicant needs to be held accountable for that. This is paperwork that we were supposed to have months ago, and now we're being forced to make a decision. Both of those decisions are not good for us. They're disappointing for the town.
So Adam says not to accept the material at this time. So Patricia Hilton.
Well, also, not having seen any of this, it's a little hard to opine, but I am curious. Has the solicitor had an opportunity to see these materials?
Absolutely not. The question to you is whether the applicant has shown good cause for late submission to this board, and even if it hasn't, whether this board still wants to consider that material since it's integral to the application.
I don't see any particular reason for a late submission. It also sounds, at least from Ashley's description, that these are primarily responses to Ashley's memo, not necessarily containing any new expert or otherwise material. Ashley?
Well, the issue is that these are items that were on a previous memo that were identified as deficient items that we were asking the applicant to provide previously. So the point I was making was that this is not the first time they've seen these listed on a memo from me. And I stand corrected, apparently Phase 1 and ESA are interchangeable. So the ESA item is a 198 pages, and it is a checklist item that was submitted with their checklist that says, you know, forthcoming to be submitted. And I did note that in the draft decision that I gave you. There has been no communication from the applicant since the submission that said that, that the ESA was coming, it was in process, there was a delay, that, like, there has been no communication, just a response to submit the 200 pages this afternoon at 3:00. I have not had a chance to look through any of it.
Ample time to submit things in order for us to be able to review them tonight and opine if necessary on them, so I am a no.
No, absolutely not.
Christopher Shea.
Absolutely not.
No.
I'm a no.
I'm also a no.
Janice.
I'm also a no.
And as chair, I will vote last, and I will vote no. So we will proceed as planned, and I would like to invite Mr. Lynch to make any brief comments he would like to make as part of the public hearing record. Would you like to perhaps?
I can ask a question first before you --
Yes, Adam.
So is the application incomplete at this point? Is the application incomplete at this point? How are we supposed to have --
That would be Ashley's determination as AO. She makes the determination of completeness or incompleteness. I think it would factor into our findings of fact if there are significant items that are outstanding. I'm not sure that that's the case. Did I answer your question?
I think so. I mean, we're okay to move forward with this meeting?
Oh, yes.
Is that where we're missing?
Oh, no, no.
The application was certified complete. The way your checklist is structured is that some items are noted on the checklist, and they say, you know, to be submitted prior to approval. The issue being that you obviously have to receive them with enough time to review them in order to make the decision. So it's not uncommon for an application to get certified complete, and then additional information to continue to come to your attention as part of the review of the application. So it is complete.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Lynch, if you would like to briefly summarize anything the applicant would like to say at this point, including maybe a brief summary of the submission that you made.
Well, what I'm going to do, Ms. Chair, is I'm going to briefly address some of the legal issues that were contained in Ms. Sweet's memo. I can have Neil Hingerani just give a very brief response to those other items, and then we can rest at that point. The issue that I addressed earlier this afternoon and forwarded to the board for review was a dispute over the, this board's purview and the review process that you have to determine what criteria you're going to be dealing with for approval. As we pointed out before, this has, this application has been deemed complete as a design review project, where you have site review and design review. We had objected to some of the criteria that were contained in the major land development review. Those criteria are now being raised in the planner's memorandum. I objected to those. What we have here is a situation where we have a use permitted by right in both the general commercial district that we're located and in the neighborhood business overlay district. A crematorium is permitted by right. And as I cited in my memo, the Rhode Island Supreme Court has stated, when a town council adopts an ordinance and determines a use to be permitted by right, that is a finding that the use has no adverse impact on the public. The planner had indicated that we have not supplied any evidence or information which would indicate that there is no hazardous use to the subject property. My response to that is, we don't have to. The town council has already determined that this use is permissible in this area. This is not a special use permit. We're not required to submit any information, that there's not going to be any nuisances created in the area, it's not going to be harmful to the general welfare and public. That's not necessary.
Please be courteous.
Your review is limited to those two criteria, site review and design review. So, you know, we have objected to the apparent obligation or burden that's now placed on this applicant to provide additional information, which goes above and beyond design review. So that's the substance of my response to the memo. I can have Mr. Hingerani just address briefly some of the technical issues that were raised in the memorandum.
That's fine. Neil, if you could come up?
Excuse me, is it possible to turn the volume up?
Yes, yes. I was wondering that myself. Can you hear people here? Can you hear the board members? Are we audible? We're audible. But that, those mics at that podium do not seem to be very effective. Neil, you're an engineer, you can fix it.
Unfortunately, if I don't see a volume switch, I'm not sure how to tackle that one. Okay, I'm going to give this a shot. Good evening, Neil Hingerani, Narragansett Engineering. I'm going to speak to a couple of these items. Joe Mallow from my office will speak to the rest. I'm going to tackle number three first regarding an ERS or a Phase 1. I think it's for some clarity here. I don't believe an ERS, which is an environmental review statement under your ordinance, is required here. That's required in watershed overlay district. The Phase 1, we have been discussing for a couple of months now whether that was actually a requirement to submit or not, considering this was a private transaction. It was requested by the board. We engaged our environmental consultant to perform a Phase 1. During that process, we had a discussion that they could have issued what would have been a Phase 1 without a conclusion due to the location of the auto body shop next door. What we and what the applicant decided to do, out of an abundance of caution, was to move to do some physical site environmental testing for the presence of petroleum that may have leached onto the site from the abutter. That took some time. It required us actually to get physical borings out to the site, so a drill rig was out to the site. They took environmental samples. This occurred a few weeks ago. Those environmental samples were sent to a lab. They came back negative. With that conclusion, they were able to pen the final Phase 1 report, which is conclusive. I understand the Phase 1 is a very, very lengthy document. 99% of that document is output from state databases. In my opinion, what is important with the Phase 1 is its conclusion, which does basically say, in essence, that there are no environmental issues with the property. So in sum, we submitted a Phase 1 with the conclusion. Just in terms of explaining the time, again, because this required borings, physical site testing, and lab work, hopefully that explains what the delay was. Going to move on to item number four, which was the height of the smokestack. I can only really speak to the actual elevation of the smokestack. I can't speak to anything further. What I can say is that the plans that we submitted, we submitted two scale architectural plans, we submitted engineering plans that are shown on a state plan datum. So everything is relative to the real world and also your town's GIS. The plans indicate that the top of the chimney will be 36 inches above the peak of the roof. Our roof peak is drawn at elevation 254.25, which means the chimney peak is at 257.25. I realize that that number in a vacuum doesn't mean a lot, but again, you can compare that with the elevations on the plan and the abutting properties to draw any conclusions you need to make. I'm going to actually see if Joe can come up to tackle the rest of these.
Joseph Mallow with Narragansett Engineering. I'm just touching upon some of the more engineering components. As far as the PAPA comments or the PAPA application, I've been in contact with PAPA, with, sorry, with Rhode Island DOT, coordinating back and forth with them for the last couple of weeks. They're just in a backlog and delay. We received some comments today. They have no -- They have no comments that are substantial that would require any changes to our drainage, site layout, or any other designs. It's mostly just coordinating our callouts to make sure that they correspond with the state standard callouts. And then just a couple little, a couple typos in the storm report. So we're not expecting, there wasn't any substantial comments out of their comments that we received today. As far as the responses to Weston and Sampson about the LID, so the LID is Low Impact Design. That's just, it's a standard procedure that we go through on all of our projects. In the first round of comments, I misunderstood the request. And then I did respond to March, responded to Weston and Sampson on March 7th. It looks like it might have got lost in the transmission, but that was resubmitted today for your review as well. Again, it's just going through your thought process and how you came up with your design. But overall, the design has been reviewed and there was no major design, so it doesn't affect the design, it's just going through my thought process. And then as far as the letter from the fire marshal, we've been in court, I think it was March, the March Planning Board, I had an email from the fire marshal stating the same exact thing, the letter, the formal letter with the letterhead. I realized the email wasn't sufficient. I spoke with the fire marshal and he provided a letter which we submitted. And I think those are, those were kind of the main points on the memo that were the missing information.
Thank you, Mr. Malo. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Malo or Mr. Hingerani or Mr. Lynch? Seeing none, I would now like to invite the legal counsel for TRAC, Tiverton residents against Crematorium, and this is Mr. Seipol. Would you like to make some brief opening comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can be briefed tonight. I received the planner's memo this afternoon and I was very pleased with the contents of that memo. I think it was very much in line with the comments that I submitted on behalf of the TRAC group. So if the board doesn't intend to stick with the development plan review application, then I think that gives you the best roadmap possible to deny that and hopefully have that I would like to just respond briefly to Mr. Lynch's memo and his comments tonight where he said that basically if you have a permitted use, that, you know, that's the end of the story and that's, I do not believe, correct. In my first memo that I had submitted to you, I was back for the April 4 meeting, I had attached two court decisions to that, both of them out of the town of Exeter, and both of them, the judge stated, both of those cases dealt with something that was a permitted use and in both cases, the court said, "Well, that's not enough. You still have to show consistency with the comprehensive plan. Your plans still have to be consistent and satisfy all of the town's regulations regardless of whether it's a permitted use." Our position would still be that development plan review would be the much more appropriate process for this to be analyzed through. Did I say development plan review? I'm sorry. Major land development would be the appropriate process here. That was what was originally, this was originally designated as a major land development project by the planner and that should have stayed there. And, you know, I understand Mr. Romano has weighed in on that. I have not received his memo that I heard was prepared. I have not received it or had a chance to review it. If the board is not inclined to, you know, convert this to a major land development, that is an issue that we would reserve for an appeal in the future. I'm going back briefly to the planner's memo. There was, of all the issues in there, there was one point where I did want to note she did not credit the testimony that was given by Dan Shea. That was at one of the earlier meetings I wasn't present for. But he was an expert in the operation of funeral homes, among other things, and he did testify that this would require 150 parking spaces. And I did want that noted for the record. That was, I think, the only issue that jumped out at me as far as something that I did not agree with that was in the planner's memo. Finally, I would, I very much appreciate the board's decision not to accept the late submission of the documents that were received this afternoon. I, I think that was very much appropriate to reject the late filing of that information. I think you were on good legal footing to deny the application on the grounds that you don't have enough information. A lot of the information that you do have is conflicting, as was pointed out in the planner's memo. And, I mean, I would very much appreciate it if someone would make a motion, have a discussion and a vote on whether this should be a major land development or a development plan review project. But barring that, we would just reserve that issue to be raised on appeal later. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Seipol? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Seipol. And at this point, I would like to, rather than open up for questions and comments from the general public, a process that could go on for a couple of hours. I think we're ready to make some decisions. But I'm not going to make that decision myself. I'm going to ask my colleagues in an informal poll if they feel that they have enough material, that they have reviewed enough material and heard enough oral comments at this point to be prepared to make a decision on the application tonight. So I will start that, just as I started the other one, with Adam. So, Adam, the issue here is, would you like to proceed now with, with a possible motion, a discussion on that motion and a vote?
Well, I would still, but I'd also like to give the public their chance if they must.
Speak into the mic.
I would like to do that, Stu, but I'd also like to give the public their chance. So I'm a little conflicted.
If we, if we go that route, we could be here quite late tonight.
Right, but I don't know how the votes can go. If we vote in a way that, you know...
And we have had a lot of opportunity in our past two meetings for the public to make comments. So at a certain point, Adam, I think we need to cut it off and just get on with...
I agree, Stu, but this was supposed to be a public meeting. I mean, this is an extension of the public speaking portion of the, you know, the application.
Yes, but, but, but...
I want to, I would love this meeting to be over as early as possible myself, but we have an obligation to let them speak, so...
Well, let me ask Patricia Hilton if she...
Well, this was advertised as a continuation of a public hearing. However, I do think that the planning board has been quite attentive for a number of meetings. So if we were to continue the public hearing, my request of the audience or those people who wanted to speak would be that if you have new information or you think it's something that we haven't heard, that we should certainly do that. But I also think that, you know, if you're mindful of the fact that we have paid very close attention now for a lot of meetings, that, you know, simply repeating information that we already know probably isn't all that helpful. So as a compromise, I would propose that we, if somebody's got something that they think we really need to know, that we allow them to speak. And after that, we could vote to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Peter.
I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleague, Patricia. I think if folks would, would only offer any new information so that we can hear from you, but that we can also expedite this, I think we're all eager to take action. So that's my sense.
Christopher.
I too agree with the colleagues to my left here. I think it's time to bring this to closure tonight. And if you could just stay focused on new material and very quickly, so we can come to a conclusion this evening and give everybody a peace of mind at the end.
Christine, your turn.
I agree with my colleagues.
I also agree with my colleagues.
Janice?
I agree.
Well, I think I'll agree too. We'll make it unanimous.
Yes.
I just want to correct something for the record before you move to the public. The applicant indicated that an ERS is not a required checklist item, and I just want to make sure that the board understands that in their November 22nd, 2022 application, they noted this checklist item is in progress. They have never had, we've never had a discussion about whether or not that was an applicable item, and they've never suggested to me previously that it was not applicable.
Thank you, Ashley. Now, I would like to then open this to the public, but again, let me, let me say, as strongly as I know how, let's keep this to new information. Let's not repeat what we have already heard in past public hearings. New information, and let's keep it very concise, because I will be the bad guy and I will cut you off if you go on and on. Because we really want to be able to make a decision tonight, hopefully sometime before midnight. So having said that, who is first? Who would like to come up first? Please keep this to three minutes maximum. Ed, would you take a...
That's going to be very difficult for me, but I will keep it. You did get my 3,000-word document.
Are you Mr. Maloney?
I'm James Maloney.
Yes. Now, when people come up, please tell us who you are, and if you live in Tiverton, give us your Tiverton address, okay? So we do have your material, Mr. Maloney. We have heard you orally and we have written material from you. So thank you very much. Do you have new material now to offer?
I have a full presentation that I just want to make sure that you're aware of. I have people from all over the world looking at this. This is not a Tiverton thing. I live in Newport. My daughter goes to Newport High School, I mean Portsmouth High School.
So this is not relevant to our discussion tonight, where your daughter goes to high school?
I'm just telling you, I am in a, I'm in a butter.
Please, let's keep this, let's keep this to the point.
The point is, this is going to affect not just Tiverton, and I hope you understand that. This is, this is something that's going to affect all of Rhode Island. And my presentation is going to be way longer than three minutes, so I'll spare it. But if you need me back, I will be here for you.
Next. Do we, do we have, do we...
Day of battle.
Do we, do we have another person who would like to offer some new information? I think I see Mr. Cormier.
I'm Al Cormier. Hello? I'm Al Cormier.
And where do you live, Mr. Cormier?
348 Souza Road.
Thank you.
And I would like to address the issue of the smokestack. For 20 years, I worked for Duro Textiles at 110 Chase Street in Fall River. And I was a maintenance mechanic that monitored, repaired. And we have an incinerator for the coating machine. And at the Gulf War, the first Gulf War, Desert Storm, we ran seven days a week, 24 hours a day, that coating machine to make the desert storm camouflage that was used. And then in March 2003, that war only lasted until February of 91. In March 2003, we continued making camouflage for the Gulf War that continued on. Well, we had an incident. We depleted the ozone layer by running the incinerator below temperature. And chemicals were released into the atmosphere and we were fined. And as part of the fine, and the penalty, I was, I volunteered with, not much input from the union or the company, but I felt it was my responsibility because I knew the incinerator inside and out. And the result was I got an education on what happens if there is an accident. And they sent me to the Massachusetts Safety Council in Braintree, where I conducted, I learned how to, an educational program about conducting workplace safety inspections. And that was September 8th, 2005, and it was a chapter of the Green Cross National Safety Council. So as a result of that incident, and I can report now that the ozone layer is in much better shape because we alleviated the problem by building the tallest structure in Fall River, an over 200-foot chimney or smokestack. And I appeal to this board to have a conscience for the residents directly behind, because at 110 Chase, you know, you've got three families all along. Duro, where the employees worked, we were safe, we were safe. At Duro, safety was the number one issue besides quality. You know, when you're making uniforms, they can't, they can't fail. I think it's important that you understand that workplace safety, the incidences, it's like an iceberg. There are many incidences, but none of them rise to the attention of the people. But like, the residents, they live right behind this thing. You know, if they do release mercury, which this gentleman seems to think they're going to release mercury and something happens, it's just not worth it to have a crematorium on Main Road.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Is there anyone else?
Jamie French at 48 Craig Avenue. The reason we have zoning and we have planning and we have government is to protect the people of a community. If unincorporated places became incorporated so that we could have this type of zoning and planning to protect us, and as volunteers, that's your job to protect the people of this community. It's not to help the applicant when they flounder, it's not, you can help them, but It's not to help the applicant when they flounder, it's not, you can help them, but it's not to go against the rights of the residents of the community. And the existing established neighborhoods and residences and people and businesses of this community have a byright use of their own property, to be able to go outside, to breathe clean air, and to feel protected. And that's why we live in communities, to be together. And we want to be safe. And so for that reason, you know, I'm sure you already know the reason that you're here, which is to make our community better. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. I do, I see one hand going up.
My name's Bob Goll, 199 Lepus Road. I would like to appeal to this board to have Mr. James Maloney speak and give him time to address some facts. I've looked into his background, and I think it's important that we learn at least a concise presentation of what he has to offer. And I would like to appeal to the board for that decision.
No. My decision as chair is that we have heard from Mr. Maloney and that we have his materials. And he has nothing new to add or to offer. So my decision as the chair, and I'm going to be the bad guy, I'm going to be the hard guy tonight, is no. Would anybody else like to come and offer? Again, let me stress, new information, information that we haven't heard, a perspective that we haven't fully understood or grasped. Give us something that we can add to the body of information that we have already absorbed over the last several months. Okay, I, I'm sorry, colleagues, but I am going to call an end to this. I am going to close this public hearing, and I am going to go on and ask the board to make some decisions. We could sit here all night, and this is becoming political theater. So I don't want that to happen. I want us to make decisions based on the information that we have received, both orally and in written form. So I will now invite any of my colleagues, if they would like to make a motion, or if they would just like to have a general discussion about the information that has come in about this, concerning this application. Would anybody like to make a motion? And again, Ashley has actually provided us with a draft, draft findings of fact. That would be, we would probably do that in one motion. And then, once we make findings of fact, perhaps have a second motion to either approve or deny the application based on the findings of fact. Or we could do it in one motion, correct, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, you could do it in one motion. Would you like to close the hearing, the public hearing portion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I believe I had already done that.
You didn't, there wasn't a motion, that's all I'm suggesting.
We need a motion to close, okay. That, then I would request a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing, no discussion? All those in favor? I think maybe we'll do a roll call on this one. So we'll start with Adam.
No, I'm not ready to close the public portion of the meeting.
You're not willing to close the public portion, okay. Tricia.
Yes.
Peter Bramonte.
Yes.
Christopher.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Rosemary.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So it's eight to one, no, seven to one, in favor of closing the public hearing. Okay. So having, so having done that officially, we can now go on to a discussion of a vote on this application. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that based on the interim town planners memorandum dated April 21st, 2023, which is hereby incorporated, as well as planning board discussion that may continue this evening in particular, that the Tiverton Planning Board deny the zoning ordinance, Article 20 Development Plan Review Application of Secconnet Partners LLC for a crematorium located at 730 Main Road.
And Tricia, does your, does your motion also include findings of fact based on Ashley's memo?
Yes, I think I incorporated that, although assuming there's a second and there's discussion, the motion may be amended later on.
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you. So we now have a motion. Do we have a second to Ms. Hilton, Hilton's motion?
I'll second it, too.
So we have a second from Adam. Okay, discussion. This is a motion to deny the application. Peter.
I would just like Ashley to briefly summarize the items that she's drawn out for the reason for denial of this application.
So there are 15 pages. I'm not going to go through all of that. But in, you know, very briefly go over, I gave you a list of items that I have, that have been an ongoing deficiency. I just want to clarify for the record, the applicant today submitted a memo dated March 7th, which appears to respond to the LID measures that were raised in several of Nathan's memos. And we have no record of ever receiving a March 7th memo. So I just want to make it clear that the planning department has no record of ever receiving that March 7th memo until today. I've provided you with an overview of the Article 1, Section 2, which is the purposes of zoning. I would, I, you know, stand behind the position that the development plan review under Article 20 indicates that, you know, it is to be, that projects are to be found in conformance with that Article 1, Section 2. And I've provided you with a summary of findings of why there are inconsistencies with those general purposes of zoning. Under Article 20 Development Plan Review, Section 6A, there are standards in which you are supposed to find for the application. And I've provided you with a summary of reasons why they have not met the burden of proof in all of those required findings. And then in the Article 10, excuse me, Article 20 Development Plan Review actually refers you over to Appendix B, the Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, Section 2353 General Standards, and indicates that you need to find that applications are in conformance with the standards found in that section. And so that section has been outlined, and I've provided you with a summary of reasons or areas where the applicant has not met the burden on those findings. And then also have looked at the town's comprehensive plan and provided you with a summary of sections of the comprehensive plan that I believe are in some degree of conflict with the application that's been presented to you.
Thank you, Ashley. Did that answer your question, Peter?
It did, thank you.
Other comments, questions? I'd just like to say that, that I've been thinking a lot about the number one purpose of Tiverton zoning. The number one purpose is to protect the, the health and welfare of the public of Tiverton. And I think that Dr. Robert Bishop and others, who are highly qualified professionals with very impressive credentials, have made a very strong case that the air quality permit that might have been issued for a crematorium at 730 Main Road might not adequately reduce the particulate, the dangerous particulate matter emissions that might come out of, out of a chimney stack. And, and would have a potential impact, a negative potential impact on the immediate abutters. I'm not so concerned about my neighborhood down at the bottom of Summerfield Lane, but I am concerned about the people who live in the immediate neighborhood. And, and I just think that, that even though a crematorium is cited as a, as an appropriate use in the neighborhood business district zone, that the, that the health concerns outweigh that. So I am, I am inclined to support Ms. Hilton's motion. Okay, if we could please hold the applause, we can perhaps have more time for discussion. So I'm looking, I'm looking at my colleagues to see if they have any further things to say.
I would also say, having been on the planning board for many years, I have also been very cognizant of health, safety, and welfare, and very objective in all my decisions. And I, I know it's a permitted use. However, I have very mixed emotions about the whole thing. And I concur with the rest of my colleagues and will vote against this petition.
So Tricia, did you have?
I do, because I've spent a lot of time thinking about this. And one of the things that I've learned in my own experience in municipal government, on the Conservation Commission, on the council, and being involved in various environmental issues, is that the idea that any agency, whether it's a federal agency like the EPA or a state agency like the DEM, as truly well-intentioned as they are, that the idea that, that because they set standards for something or they have permitting for something, that that means that, that we are all protected all the time is naive at best, because they are, they are agencies that are subject to bureaucratic pressures, to competing interests, to budgetary limitations, and yes, sometimes even to political pressure. And, and that means that, that the regulations that they set sometimes take a very, very long time, and that there are often compromises, and that they can't account for every single possible permutation and situation that might arise. And so sometimes those regulations go, or the permitting process kind of goes along with an idea of, you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, because you're only going to get good, you're not going to get perfect. And, and that means that, that we as citizens, whether of the United States or of our state Rhode Island, you know, that, that those things can't always protect us in every single situation. And, you know, I can, I can point to examples here. If you've been paying attention recently, the EPA just only recently announced that it's going to set limits for PFAS in water, those are the forever chemicals. There's 20 years of science that exists regarding the health risks with these forever chemicals, but it's 20 years before the EPA has actually gotten to the point where they've said they're going to set limits for them in drinking water like they set limits for other things. And from here, that'll take probably years of public comment. Even in Tiverton, we've had our own experience with it. For those of you who live in North Tiverton, who are in the middle of the sewer project, we're not getting sewers in North Tiverton because the town council thought, well, gee, that'd be nice, let's just do that. Or people said, I'm tired of having a septic system, I want a sewer. We're doing that because the DEM mandated them in certain, in two particular areas. And the DEM mandated them because there were repeated occurrences of fecal bacteria in the Secconnet River. And obviously fecal bacteria in the Secconnet River is a public health risk. DEM's investigation was such that there were two particular neighborhoods, and that the only solution to that health problem was, in fact, sewers. It wasn't to upgrade septic systems or to, or to, you know, replace pipes or, or any of those things, it was sewers. But all of those septic systems that were there, every single one of them, at some point was permitted by DEM. So how is it that you have all these septic systems that had been permitted by DEM, and now, many years later, they're no longer suitable and we have to have sewers? Well, it's not that the DEM's not incompetent or that they don't care, it's just that their adjudicative authority doesn't go that far. When they permit septic systems, they can only look at a lot and see if that lot can meet the standards. And they have no ability to look beyond that. And in the case of those neighborhoods, what DEM said is, there's more septic leakage essentially, collectively, cumulatively, from all these systems than the land can handle. And therefore, you know, there is, there is fecal bacteria in the river. DEM didn't permit all those septic systems, thinking, well, you know, we don't care what happens down the road, they simply don't have the authority to look that far. And when I look at the permitting for the air quality permit, I see a very similar kind of thing, where DEM has a set of guidelines for permitting, but they only go so far. They don't have the authority to look beyond at certain particular, unique characteristics that exist in evaluating that permit. And again, it's not because they're not good people, there are a ton of really great people that work at DEM, but they are limited in their authority, both by regulation and by what the General Assembly allows them to do. And sometimes it's not as much as they would like to do themselves. To Stu's point, the neighbors that I'm the most worried about are the neighbors on Pecassett and Hamley, in part because of the elevation. And our town planner has done a wonderful job of laying out both the elevation of the crematorium, as well as the elevation of those houses that are close by on Pecassett and Hamley, and they are all uphill. Not only that, as best I can tell, looking at the tax cards for all of them, they all have an upper story, whether it's a full second story or a, or a half, a finished half-story, all of those buildings of those houses have a, have an upper story, which, which puts their windows even higher. And finally, and I'm a lifelong sailor, and there's a reason that Rhode Island is the sailing capital or one of the great sailing capitals of the world, and that's because we have wind, we have consistent wind all the time. There are lots of places that have water, there aren't places that have wind like we have, if you're a sailor. So Rhode Island, San Narragansett Bay, the Secconnet River, you can count on the wind. But we also have a consistent wind, and it's the westerly. So we have a westerly wind almost all the time. The only time we don't have a westerly is when we have something like a nor'easter or a tropical storm or an odd weather event. Other than that, you can count on the winds coming out of the west. In the wintertime, it's mostly the northwest, the median breeze is northwest. In the summertime, it's the southwesterly. And for those of you who love the sea breeze that fills in every afternoon, it might start out with a light westerly, the land heats up, the air rises, the cool air rushes in off of the ocean, and that gives us that sea breeze we get almost every afternoon. But that means for me that those houses on Pecassett and Hambley, which are on the eastern quadrant of this, they will have an exposure via the breeze, via the prevailing westerly and via that breeze, that to my mind seems really substantial. And I don't really know, and no one can tell me, and it's not part of DEM's evaluation, what happens with that kind of exposure in a year, or five years, or 15 years, or 20 years? Because that is where the breeze blows. No, no, stop, stop, let me finish, please. So I think that, again, not to malign EPA or DEM, because I think they do the very best they can with the limitations that they have and the pressure that they have, both political and budgetary and, you know, competing interests. But if they can't provide that level of protection for us, then I think the planning board here in this community in our town needs to be the line in the sand. And because I can't feel assured from anyone, and nor can DEM tell us, even if they were to eventually generate a permit, that there's no additional long-term health risk for those neighbors on Pecassett and Hambley, then I think that it's our job as the planning board to be that protection, and therefore I am a no.
Thank you. Actually, I believe that's a comment?
I just want to note for the record, based on Patricia's testimony, discussion, that you do have within the record of information of an exchange between DEM and I believe a resident through an email, where similar questions were posed about long-term impacts and certain chemicals, and the responses back from DEM are provided, which I think support Tricia's position.
So are there any other comments from board members before we go ahead and actually have a recorded vote? Seeing none, hearing none, I would then ask for a yea or nay vote on Tricia's motion, which also includes, I believe, findings of fact, as well as a final vote on the application itself, correct, Tricia?
Yes. And by incorporation, the discussion of the planning board subsequent to the motion.
So I would...
Is our solicitor comfortable with the motion? I would just like to make sure that he is.
Yes, it's a very good motion.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, we've had a discussion, and so now I'd like to call the question, and I'll start with Adam. Adam votes yes. Peter?
Yes.
Christopher?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we have a unanimous vote, and I believe this brings this agenda item to a close.
By a vote of eight to zero.
By a vote of eight to zero with one of our members absent. I would just like to remind the audience, you've been such a good audience tonight, to please leave quietly, because we have a very full agenda of other items. So if you could just leave and not discuss anything until you leave the room, and then we can get on with the rest of our meeting, which is quite lengthy. Thank you so much for coming. So the next item on our agenda is Pecassett Reserve, also known as Tiverton Heights. Should we? Okay. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. Commencing the meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board and introducing Agenda Item Number Two, which is Pecassett Reserve. This is, we are now continuing a public hearing. The applicant proposes to amend the preliminary plan that was approved months ago in three different areas. First, to move several buildings in Phase One to make room for a new community center. The second amendment would be to reconfigure sidewalks along Souza Road and Fish Road to accommodate wetlands and other physical obstructions. And then the third item that Jeremy Lake and the applicants are requesting is a waiver of the 35-foot height limitation. And now, I believe, the applicant is proposing to just do that for eight buildings on Fish Road. And that would add four feet of height, so those buildings could be as high as 39 feet. Did I get that right, Jeremy? And I'd just like to say by introduction that I think that the planning board has discussed and has largely approved the sidewalk issue and the reconfiguration of buildings in Phase One to accommodate the community center. So the outstanding issue that we had at our last meeting was the height issue. And rather than grant just a carte blanche approval of adding height to all buildings in all phases, I think the planning board wanted a more specific idea, and I think Jeremy has now given that to us. So having said that, Jeremy or Bill Landry, would you like to say anything by way of introduction?
No, thank you.
So I think that our task tonight, I think, is just to pretty much focus on the height issue. Once we've got that done, we can approve.
Yeah, that's a very, very helpful summary. You know, there's nothing real legal here. I'll just clarify, it's actually nine buildings on Fish Road. It's nine eight-unit buildings, right? I think it's always been nine eight-unit buildings. I think it was just 81 units. I think it was just a clerical issue.
There are eight of them along Fish Road, so everybody's correct in saying that. But there is a ninth building that's behind GNH, which is called Building J. We'll point it out in the site plan.
Okay, that's fine.
So it all technically, it needs the waiver requirement as well, because it's the same set of issues, it's just it's not on Fish Road, which is what the confusion was.
And you've got this up on the screen.
I do, since we have some members of the public.
You're showing the buildings that would be. So I think I'll open it up to the public to see if anybody in the public has any questions. And of course, you can ask questions about sidewalks or the community center, as well as the height issue, just because we do have a public hearing in progress now.
And we have all the exhibits, so if you want me to walk through any of them, I can, but we can also just take questions if you guys have.
Well, you provided us with some really good information. I mean, we even got the view of the buildings from Fish Road. So we have that either electronically or in hard copy already, but I'll ask my colleagues on the board if they would like to have more. Ashley, were you recommending that we go ahead and approve the, now the nine buildings along, basically along Fish Road, approve the four-foot height variance, so that they could go up to 39 feet as opposed to 35 feet? You suggested that, and that is part of your recommended motion?
Yes, you just have to amend it to reflect Building J, which is also in Phase One. I missed that building on the site plan because it's behind.
Yeah, okay. So I'm not hearing any questions from the audience. Do we have any questions or comments from, is everybody pretty much comfortable with what Jeremy Lake is now proposing? Yes, Tricia?
So I actually have a question. So when I'm looking at this, and each building is labeled, and then there's a building height that's either 37, 38, or 39 feet, plus or minus, right? So is that a fairly, obviously, if it's a plus or minus, it's not a completely fixed determination, but are you basically saying, you know, we're pretty sure that Building A doesn't have to go to 39 feet, it's probably going to be about 37? Is that what you're saying here?
Yeah, because again, the heights that we're requesting are driven by the proposed grades around the building. So there are some buildings that are on flatter areas, some buildings are on steeper areas, which is why the calculation would be higher for those on the steeper spots.
Yep. And plus or minus is like, plus or minus what?
Plus or minus means it's not like you'd pull a tape measure and hit 39.
Right.
But I think what we're asking for you guys to do is allow a height up to 39 feet, so we would be below 39 in every condition. So the plus-minus was meant to say, it's tough to be an exact science, because it's an average of a grade, and the grade is, you know, different in a number of locations. So again, the way we discussed it with the building inspector, it really is a cap, right? Like, we cannot exceed 39 feet. So when I say 37 plus minus, 38 plus minus, we know it's below it. When I say 39 plus minus, that doesn't mean it's okay to be plus of 39. If you set the requirement at 39, it will be below 39 or below.
Okay.
Jeremy, I was by there today, and it looks as though you're doing some, you're clearing some of the land now. There's a lot of moguls in there. How much are you going to take off of spread, Mr. Harkins?
I'm not clearing land, so somebody else left me.
I mean, it looks so different with all the...
Yeah, well, the vegetation's gone, so yeah, it looks different. But yeah, I mean, there's the average grades, you know, per the site plan, I know it's probably hard for you to read, but a lot of those dips and valleys, that all gets mostly smoothed out, but there's general slope of the land, either back to front or side to side, and so that's what Jeremy's referencing. When you take average grade, you take average existing grade, I believe how the ordinance is written, and that's what we have to go by.
You'll be seeing it in Providence with the height.
No, I don't think so.
And the plans that you probably have up there, are those the ones that are dated April 18?
That's correct, that's the set.
Just so we're on the same page.
So any other comments or questions? Does everybody feel fairly comfortable?
Can I just say, so where it says 39 feet?
Can we just have them change that to say 39 max instead of plus minus?
Yeah.
Just on those particular buildings?
To make it clear what Jeremy just said, it would not, in no instance, would it exceed 39 feet?
I get it, but it says plus minus, so just for it to say max would be...
But just to be on the safe side to change that, to make that very clear.
Sure, I mean, it's just an exhibit, but I think, you know, so your decision will say it's a 39-foot max, and that's what we will then live by.
Yes.
Not to exceed...
Not to exceed 39 feet under any circumstance.
We're going to record an amended preliminary decision and plan, because they're changing the location of the community center and things like that. So there will be another preliminary set, that you can put maybe a, like, note that there's a condition of approval, that it, you know, it's not to exceed 39 feet.
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to adjust it, just if you want me to change the package to say 39 max, we're happy to do that.
So is everybody fairly comfortable with what Mr. Lake is suggesting now? I see nodding heads. Then would somebody like to make a motion to approve the draft, the draft language that Ashley has provided in her memo, to approve this amendment to the preliminary Actually, probably I should entertain a motion to close the public hearing first. So why don't I do that? Would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing? So we have a motion from Tricia and a second from Christopher. Any discussion, hearing, no discussion, all of those in favor, just show of hands, it's unanimous, so the public hearing is closed. And now, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the, and here we're approving all three areas, the sidewalks, the community center, and the reconfiguration of buildings because of the community center, and the height limitation. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve that, as reflected in Ashley's memo?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Amendment to the preliminary plan.
With regard to your sidewalk and...
Community center.
Maximum of 39-foot height extension for buildings A through J? A through J.
A through J, nine buildings.
But there's no I. There's no building I, so I don't want it to be unclear that it's A through J.
That's sometimes a convention, so you don't confuse it with Building One.
Right, so there is no building I.
Yeah.
So I thought that was a superstition, like, you know, 13, you know, for 13. So we do have a motion from Tricia.
Mr. Ruddy, I just didn't hear clearly. Did she say maximum 39 or not to exceed 39 feet?
Well, what would you prefer?
Exceed.
Not to exceed 39.
Uh-huh, not to exceed. So we have, so did we have, do we have a second to that motion? Oh, yes, Christopher. Do we have any further discussion about that? Everybody is, everybody understands what we did with the sidewalks and what we did with the reconfiguration of the buildings around the community center in Phase One? Good, okay. Then I'm going to, if there's no further discussion, I don't hear any, all of those in favor, I believe it's unanimous. Great, thank you. Thank you, good luck, good luck with your project. So now, we can go on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Highland Builders, which is at 785 Main Road. This is a, this is, would be a 2,179-square-foot workshop office building in a neighborhood business zone. Mr. Dean and Ms. Demte, I think, are coming forward as the applicants. Way back in February, at our February 7 meeting, we agreed on a hearing and to consider the application as a development plan review under Article 20. We also discussed the fact that if they built a larger building, they would need zoning relief for the front yard setback. Then on March 7, we appointed, at our March 7 meeting, we appointed an ad hoc... we appointed an ad hoc technical review committee, and that committee just met today at 12:00 noon at Town Hall. And we also now have a copy of the OWTS, the On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Septic Permit, which has been approved by RIDAM. And Ashley has done a memo to explain the process going forward and to summarize what happened at the ad hoc TRC. So, maybe, Ashley, the first step would be to just summarize the TRC today, Technical Review Committee meeting that occurred today for the benefit of the board.
Sure. So, I also did provide a revised memo, which is dated today, because it was revised today based on the TRC meeting, where I noted additional conditions of approval that were discussed at the TRC meeting and have been drafted to the agreement of the members of the TRC in addressing any concerns that were raised. And I can go through those quickly if that's helpful. I realize that you've just, just gotten this.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay. So, there's a condition number four that's been added to the memo that indicates a list of items that will be updated on the site plan by the applicant. And I know that Mallory has provided some of those updates in draft form so that you're able to, to see them. But essentially, the list is that they need to delineate the five required parking spaces. I believe she's shown that on the updated plan. There needs to be a note on the plans from the civil engineer that the gravel area to the west side of the building will be installed to withstand the load from a fire truck for access. The existing storage units on the site are to be moved and are subject to a five-foot setback for the rear inside property lines. I believe that their plan is to move them to the east corner, but I did not want to draft a condition that would pin them into that location if they find a better location on the site. They are going to reconfigure the ADA, there's a single ADA parking space that's required as part of the five parking spaces. It was discussed today with the zoning official, and there was an agreement that they would show him a reconfigured parking space to his approval. There's a propane tank at the rear of the building on the west side that they're going to move so that they can have a parking space in that location. They're going to update their landscape plan to include the quantity of the proposed plantings and to make it clear on the plans that the arboretum row on the north property line is an existing landscape feature. They are going to show the location and specifications for the handicap parking signage and any other parking signage intended to be installed. There are a couple of parking spaces that occur on pervious surface, and the zoning official understands that they can't necessarily stripe those spaces, so they're going to come up with some mechanism that's agreed upon, whether it's a parking block or a sign that delineates where those spaces exist. They're going to provide the beam spread of the proposed light fixtures to be installed that shows that the light does not trespass beyond the property lines. I believe that's also on Mallory's updated draft plans. They're also going to update the plans with regards to utility and stormwater features as outlined in the town engineer's memo dated May 2, 2023. And they are going to confirm whether or not a PAP is required from RIDOT, and if it is required, they will provide one. So, the discussion at the TRC meeting was that with the satisfaction of these conditions, everyone's concerns were addressed, and everyone was comfortable with the plan.
Yes, Rosemary, did you have a?
Yes.
Just for the record, I was an observer at the meeting, and it went very well, but I would like you to express what zoning relief will be required.
So, the other, well, the condition of approval, that's number two, is that the applicant will obtain zoning relief from the zoning board for the front setback, and that's because of the bump out that they put at the front of the building to, to address the Form Based Code requirements. So, the front setback is 25 feet, and they're proposing a setback of 16.1 feet.
And, and our motion would, would express our support for relief, for dimensional relief, so that the zoning board of review knows that we support this.
Yes.
Because we actually asked for it.
Right. What about the lot coverage?
So, they need to, their existing lot coverage, I believe, is 13%. They have two existing storage structures on the property, which they're, like I said, they're going to move. Those storage structures need to get counted as part of their lot coverage, but based on the size of those, or the footprint of those storage structures, it shouldn't, it should not put them at lap, at lot coverage.
They won't need a relief?
I don't believe so, but if they...
Once it's calculated.
Once it's calculated, if they exceeded 25%, obviously, then they would need lot coverage relief, but based on the footprint of those units, they should not exceed 25% lot coverage.
And the number of parking spaces also was discussed.
It was agreed upon that it's five.
Mr., the building official said he would go with five.
He did, and I have that in writing. It's in the record.
Okay.
So, it's, it's a bit unusual to have a TRC the very day of, of also having at least a potential vote on the application itself, but this, this is not the, you know, this is not because the applicant has been dragging their feet. They have, actually, worked very, very positively with the planning board and have been very responsive to our concerns about building design and landscaping, and they've given us a very nice project. So, so I think that, so I'm, I'm very supportive of this project, and I hope we can approve it tonight. It is, we do have a public hearing, so I would ask if there's any member of the public who would like to make any comments on this. Seeing, I'm not seeing anybody. So, maybe the first item of business would be a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So, we have a motion from Rosemary and a second from Christopher. Any further discussion, hearing, no discussion, all of those in favor? I believe it's a unanimous vote. Okay, now, do we have a motion to approve?
Conditional.
Approve with conditions based on what came out of the TRC, the Technical Review Committee meeting today, and what, what issues that came up earlier that are all identified in Ashley's memo. So, do we, would anybody like to make a motion to, to approve, basically, Ashley's memo? To, to, to approve the project conditionally based on the, the information contained in Ashley's memo?
So moved.
Conditional approval?
Conditional approval.
So, we have a motion from Rosemary.
No, from Janice.
Oh, from Janice, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We have a motion from Janice, and we have a second from Tricia Hilton. Do we have any further discussion on this? Seeing, hearing, no discussion, all of those in favor? I think it's unanimous. Janice, did you put your hand up? You must have, because you made the motion.
You made the motion.
Okay. Well, congratulations. Thank you.
About the east corner and whatnot, I see the arrow on that plan. Can we not put, like you said, can we not put the direction?
I didn't.
Okay, okay.
The condition of approval doesn't have a location. It just says that you're going to relocate them. I didn't want to make you relocate, if for some reason in the future that didn't work out and you went to move them. So, it doesn't have a location. It's just, you're going to move them. But if you could correct the arrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Stu? Given how really lovely this applicant has been to work with and, and the work that they've put into, you know, doing something really nice, I thought we had mentioned sending a positive recommendation to the zoning board on their behalf, so...
Yes.
I'd be happy to make a motion that, that we send a positive recommendation for the requested dimensional variance for the front property line.
So, this would be a separate communication. It wouldn't just be part of our motion, but it would be a separate letter from the, from the chair or the, or the, or the planner, I'm not sure who, urging the zoning board of review to grant dimensional relief. So, yes, I would actually be happy to do a draft letter and run it by Ashley, get that off, maybe even as early as tomorrow, because you will have to go to zoning. So, yes. So, we, we, we have that. Actually, I don't think we even need to vote on that. I've, I've just agreed to it. So, yes. And we, and we have done this in the past.
Let's just wrap it up. I think you're going to get a concurrence anyways.
Okay, so if we, we have a motion, do we have a second? Christopher seconds it. Hearing, no discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, okay. So, that gives me a little homework to do tomorrow. I'll have to, but no, that's a good idea. That's a very good idea. Make sure that zoning understands that the planning board actually asked for this. So, good, great. Thank you. So, that brings us to agenda item number four, which is 575 Naniquocket, a three-lot subdivision. It's called Naniquocket Farms. I believe that Court Chappell, oh, I see Court. Court is coming. And is Eva Longobardi here?
Correct.
Oh, hello, Eva. So, this, for anybody in the audience or anybody watching the screen, this is what many old Tivertonians would call Homelands, the, the, the Durfee family estate that goes way back and has a very rich history. It's, I believe, about 33 acres. And what Ms. Longobardi is proposing is a three-lot subdivision, but, but basically, most of the 33 acres, I believe about 29 acres, would be the, the land around the old manor house, the old farmhouse, including the Briggs Family Historic Cemetery, including the Revolutionary War redoubt, including a lot of significant plantings of trees that were done 100 or more years ago by the founder of the Arnold Arboretum in Boston. So, you're actually preserving what most of us consider the really valuable features of that estate.
Yes.
And what you're subdividing would be the four or five acres south of Quocket Creek or Quocket Brook.
Yes, it's on the other side of the, the creek. I cannot access that from my property, but I think it's, it's going to be about three acres. And, but I want to, I'm going to retain the creek and a good portion of the woods on the other side of the creek for the animals and, you know, that I want to keep around.
Uh-huh.
And this is Eva's primary home, as you know.
Right.
Yes.
Right, right. So, I, I had problems with the plans. I'm a terrible plan reader to begin with, as Nathan knows, but I, it took me a while to figure out what was going on there, looking at the plans. Don't disrespect me, Tom. But could you put the plans up on the screen so that people in the audience can see exactly what's going on here?
I don't have that availability, Mr. Chair.
Because it, it was not clear to me initially where the dividing lines would be for the two new lots that are split off from the, you know, from the 33-acre original estate.
And, and if I could just take a couple of minutes, I can kind of walk you guys and the board members through the plans itself. One of the big things...
Did other people have the same problem I had with reading the plans?
I have many problems with the plans.
Sure. Well, we can fix those problems.
It was...
Sure. We can do a little bit of stuff with some drafting and some coloring. But again, we're engineers, not architects, so we're, we work in the black and white two-dimensional realm. But the main intent, like Eva had said, is the southeast quadrant of this property. It's almost approximately four acres. So, it is split between Quaker Creek, which connects an upland pond to our Type 1 waters of Naniquocket Pond itself, and it goes underneath the culvert, underneath Naniquocket Road, as I'm sure most of you know. But basically, what we're doing, it's almost self-dividing itself with Quaker Creek. So, Quaker Quee, Creek, sorry, try to say that 10 times fast, is basically our dividing line between Eva's property and this subdivision. So, we're creating two new lots of record. I know it's a three-lot total subdivision, but again, to reiterate, yes, we are preserving the historic house and the rest of the property, and it's Eva's main residence where she resides now. So, she wouldn't do anything else to negatively impact that. So, it's almost perfect because of the natural vegetation that we have there on that Quaker Creek. We had our wetlands biologist, Brandon Fenu from Ecosystem Solutions, go there, delineate that creek, delineate the coastal feature, delineate the upland pond, just to see what else we were left. And when we reviewed this, I mean, we were able to get maybe an additional lot, but that wasn't the question. Eva wanted to preserve that, but she didn't necessarily need that, you know, space for her own property. So, we didn't necessarily maximize that, that development, because it is over four acres. So, what we did is we made two larger lots that have a little bit more frontage, a little bit more square footage. We could have took a little bit more square footage if we wanted to from the farm on the upland area. So, we tried, again, on the plans, and we could, we could maybe put a color rendition together for you, Mr. Chair, and circulate around. Might be a little bit easier. But there, there are a lot of lines, because there's a lot of regulatory lines here. There's a lot of wetland lines, there's a lot of topography, there's a lot of vegetation, there's a lot of setbacks, zoning setbacks. So, so I agree, and I apologize if it didn't come across very clear, but that is the intent, and I think that natural stream feature is a great delineation for this subdivision and to split off those two lots.
Yeah, I actually, I actually went down there to, to take a look at it, and it's almost as if it were a separate lot altogether.
It feels separate.
I mean, no one, no one would ever guess that that lot belonged to Homelands. I, I wouldn't have guessed that.
Right.
But it does. So, one, one issue that came to my mind, however, is the, the issue that comes up from time to time is, can you have two primary residences on a single lot? And not in Tiverton, you can't, but you seem to, but that seems to be the case. There, there is a, there is, it look, it almost looks like a barn that was turned into a residence.
Yes, there is a cottage on the farm.
And so legally, so I'm, I'm just curious about the legal status of that. Is that occupied by somebody? Do you rent that to somebody?
No, right, right now, I haven't got it.
But it is a pre-existing, non-conforming, two-on-one.
It is.
And now, it's probably legal as an accessory dwelling, quite frankly.
It's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, yes, but we've been advised over the years, once you change the lot lines, you have to conform to today's zoning and planning.
Yeah, I was just wondering about that.
I don't agree with that at all.
I'm just telling you this, but I do have problems. That does not show on the plans. Those buildings, remnants, or whatever they are, are not on the plans.
It is. It is. I pulled the card at the Town Hall, so...
On this plan, Eva, it doesn't show. I came down to pay you a visit yesterday because I used to play on this property.
Oh, you're welcome anytime.
The farmer that had the barn that burned down, they used to take care of me, and I came down, knocked on your door, no one was home. came down, knocked on your door, no one was home, didn't answer, but I was, I saw that the, the cottage or whatever it was there, it's not depicted on the plan. And the other thing is, there is a, on, I don't know what you'd call it, Tom, on page four of five, we really need a plan that shows what, the three lots on one plan, not an insert, because I believe it's Lot One, that you're gonna name as Lot One, you do say Lot One overall layout, but you don't have it set, there's no, there.
Overall layout, I could just maybe increase the scale on that, I have a two hundred scale overall layout.
Is that gonna be Lot One?
What's that?
Is that gonna be Lot One?
Lot One would be.
Yes.
Okay.
Pre-existing, correct.
Lot One would be the pre-existing?
That's the, that's the big lot, the twenty-nine acres left.
Lot Two would be the south lot.
You need dimensions on it.
It shows up as Lot 101 on my plan.
I know, because it's, it's mislabeled.
Yeah, we, so I guess what we maintained is, again, I think the lot number would stay, would remain with a larger lot, and then we just said subdivision lot number one and two.
Okay, but you have, you've also denoted, the one that you're cutting out is Lot One.
Lot 101.
You've got Lot One is one of the new lots.
Correct.
And you've got Lot Two is the second new lot.
Correct, so proposed Lot One and proposed Lot Two are the newly created lots.
And the old one would probably be Lot Three.
And it's confusing because the parcel is Lot 101.
I'd suggest we call the original lot Lot One, and then make the two subdivisions Lot Two and Lot Three.
Right, Court.
That would be simpler.
And, you know.
And remember, we do deeds now when we record if it's granted, so that there's, the title guys don't have to figure all that out.
The cemetery doesn't show on the, the new depicted.
The overall layout.
The layouts, the setbacks, you know, the, it's not well depicted. And it's also, the cemetery needs a cross, as we've talked before. Do you have stone wall around the cemetery, I've forgotten what it looked like.
The stone wall on the cemetery does show on page three of five, up in what I'll call the northwest corner.
Right, it's very light on the, the big plan.
We can darken that up.
You know, and then there's a drive, as you come in the driveway, there's, there were two cones, the orange cones, is it construction?
Going towards the cemetery, yes.
It's for the cemetery?
That goes towards the cemetery.
It looked like there was a construction vehicle or something.
Oh, it was when the, there was some linesman's truck last season, and they were cutting all the trees on Naniquocket, and they needed a place to park, so I allowed them to park it down that road.
Okay, just an observation yesterday.
That's why those are there.
Right, but the buildings don't show on the plan, I mean, I don't know what else, but it should show all.
We, we can show more detail on Lot One. We kinda looked at Lot One as almost being irrelevant.
You remember, Court, how we had a, a plan that shows everything, instead of being inserts like you've shown on.
I think the smaller, the smaller one helps in addition to the big one, because it does get you, the problem with putting it all on one is.
Right, even if you had match lines.
I need better glasses than they sell at CVS these days to, to read the small one, so. I, I agree, we need a big overall one for you.
We need an overall, like you've got your existing conditions.
And the small one, so you can read the numbers.
You've got your, and Tom likes to put his titles, he doesn't put them in the title box, he puts them above the title box.
Yeah, I confused you, sorry.
You wanna take notes?
Yeah, Josh.
The lot layout needs modifications.
Always a good man in the background, yeah.
Need more stone walls, Stu?
So.
I, I would like to address, Ashley gave you memorandum, as you know, and there were two specific questions that I saw that she asked. One was to point out or clarify on the plan, because there was a reference to it not being agriculture, this is in the state farm forest open space or, or state tax program, so you can subdivide that, but as you know, if it changes hands and doesn't become farmed, then it goes back as a taxable lot, so the town will get a taxable lot out of this, but as long as they're common ownership, I can, you can run them together, and, and those are your hay, right now they are hayfields.
So my comment was based on the notes on the plan that said that there's no agriculture, active agriculture on the site, and it certainly appears that there is, so I would like that corrected.
You noticed that we were gonna correct the plan to show that there is, but that's what that agriculture use is, many of us, including me and my farm, we have farmers that come hay it, just to keep the farm, keep the farm status and keep it going, the crop of hay is allowed.
They have to apply for that every year, do they not, Mr. Chappell, with a tax successor?
We re, we reapply every December thirty-first, sign affidavits that we're farming. And every two years at least, under the town program that I'm in, provide the F-1040, which is a showing that you have a farm tax return.
Yeah, and I do.
With a minimum of twenty-five hundred dollar annual income or something to that effect.
Isn't it fifteen acres?
It's ten, it's two acres in Portsmouth, it's ten acres on the state program, but the lot that she has left will still be in, obviously, in excess of ten acres. And again, you could own, in theory, sixteen half acre, or sixteen one acre lots, you're, you have to certify that you farm an aggregate of ten acres, if they're contiguous, you can hold them on, rather than, so you could file a subdivision and continue to farm it.
Lot One would probably qualify well.
But they will, when they get transferred, and, and the farming is gonna continue here, there is discussions with the, not so different from something we were here from last month, about building a barn, because there's going to be animal husbandry and horses on the property, and in this zone, it is allowed as a matter of right, because it's more than five acres. And the question becomes, we may, we may need to.
I have a horse, I keep it at some power stables, but my goal is to have horses at home.
Nice.
So, so she wants to put a nice barn there. There's an issue that Todd's gonna see about whether it can be an eight hundred and forty-four square foot barn.
I can't hear.
An accessory use under your zoning ordinance, can only be eight hundred and forty-four square feet, that's a zoning board issue, all barns are generally, sometimes bigger than that. So the question is, can a primary use building on an agriculture?
You may have an SGR there.
Not fair to go over it with Todd now, it's coming to a theater near you shortly, that question, because it came across my desk the other day. But she is planning to put a, put a building there and to, to match a barn agricultural building, consistent with the, with the.
With the same Gambrel style roof, you know, I, I'd like to put a, I'm planning to put a thirty-six by thirty barn to start, a small barn, to match the house.
Yeah.
Same style.
Has it had a studio back there that burned down too?
The what?
There was a studio that burned back down there years ago.
Oh, okay. Years ago, I'll tell you some history.
Yeah, I wanna know more about that, I've heard about it.
So, so what would you like to do tonight, Ashley? Are we prepared to approve the preliminary plan? This is a, this is a minor three lot subdivision, so it has a preliminary plan and a final plan, but we would need to put conditions on that.
Right, so I had initially had two conditions, questions that I felt needed to be cleared up, one was the natural heritage area, and the other was the agricultural use on the property. From what I've been pulled out of this discussion, you would want the lots to be relabeled to reflect that the large lot would be Lot One, the two newly created lots would be Lots Two and Three, the cemetery needs a cross, we need all the existing buildings on the site plan, and you want a sheet that shows that all the, a sheet that shows all the lots together in, in their new configuration.
Right, with, with the building footprints and with the cemetery footprint, et cetera.
You are correct as to the heritage as well.
So that needs to get corrected on the plan as well. I have a question, because I'm looking, the GIS for some reason is not working, but I'm looking at Google Earth, and it looks like there's the main building at the end of that loop, and then just north of that, it appears that there's another roof that's sort of in the trees, and then to the northwest slightly, there's another lighter colored roof on the west side of the property.
That's the cottage, the last one you mentioned, the, the one underneath the big pine trees is, is an old barn that I'm in the process of shoring up because it's sagging a little bit, but.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on how many structures, and that all of those make it onto the site plan.
Right.
And there's also one little structure for my wellhouse, it's only maybe a eight by eight structure, because I guess years ago, there must've been an old cistern, down below, it's, it's like maybe twelve feet deep and twelve or so feet wide, built of old brick that they line, you know, and my modern day well is drilled in the base of that, so I have plumbing there that goes underground to the house, so there's that little structure, you know.
There was a pump house there.
So.
So we'll locate the wellhouses as well.
But, but it, it should be on the plans, I think.
All, all structures.
All, all structures. So would, what, what is the pleasure of the planning board, would you like to? I, I don't see this as a controversial subdivision at all, I, I think, I, I'm delighted that, that Eva is going to protect the old house and many of the historic features. That's, that's really important, I think, to the town of Tiverton, it's just an iconic
I love it.
place, that everybody loves, and it's, it's been there for a couple of hundred years, and it'd be really nice to have it on the National Register of Historic Properties too, but of course, that's your decision as the owner, but I, I, I have no problem with this subdivision. I, I'm not sure that we're ready to approve, to give conditional approval of the preliminary plan tonight, so I'm asking if you think we should go ahead and do that? Again, it would be conditional approval.
Stu, I would make a, I'd make a motion for conditional approval of the plan subject to redrawn plans, meeting the criteria that Ashley outlined.
Yes, excellent. Would somebody like to second that? Peter seconds that, so we have a motion and a second to give conditional approval to this three lot minor subdivision for the preliminary plan, and, and then Ashley and the chair would then also have the ability to approve the final plan administratively. Thank you.
Is Ms. Hilton amending her motion for that purpose?
Yes.
A second motion, or you want me to amend my first motion? So I will amend my first motion to include approval of the final plan by the chair of the planning board and the administrative officer.
And that way, we can make sure that we're happy with the plans and all of the conditions have been met, so, and then they don't have to come back before the planning board. So if everybody is comfortable with that, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have a, do we have any discussion on that? Hearing none, seeing none, all of those in favor, just a show of hands, I think it's unanimous. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And if anybody's ever interested, wants a tour of the property, I have a little cabota, I can take you around and give you a tour of the house if you'd like.
So, so a good, I'd say a good fifteen, twenty years ago, Gary Plunkett, who was one of our, our famous botanists here in Tiverton, did a tour of your property focusing on all of the plantings that were done by the, by the gentleman who was related to the Durfee family and.
That was Charles Sargent.
Yeah, and, and was connected with Arbor.
He was the head of the Boston Arnold Arboretum.
Arbor Arboretum, yeah. Yeah, it was fascinating. Thank you, good luck.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us to agenda item number five, which is planning board business. Christine, you're getting off. So the first item, five A, and I'm gonna call on Tricia Hilton to lead the discussion on this, because I think Tricia and Ashley have a plan on how to handle the solar energy systems application checklist.
I spoke with Ashley about the easiest way to do this, because some of the items there are, that are necessary, are already in the regular checklist, so Ashley suggested that I put together a list of the checklist regulations that are just specific to solar, and I didn't necessarily have to know exactly where and what phase they belonged in, but if I could provide that for her, then she would help sort out which phase they might be required at, so that's kinda where we are for now, so I'm working on that, and as soon as I get it to Ashley, then we'll go from there. So that's the sum of the update.
Good, so it, it sounds to me like Tricia and Ashley have a plan, and we don't have to do anything, the rest of us are off the hook, so I like that idea. Good, so I think that brings us to agenda item five B, approval of minutes of our April four meeting, and did, does anybody have any further, any corrections? I'm looking at Janice, because Janice.
I didn't find any.
You did?
I have a request, just the format of the, to get rid of the bold items, I mean, the questions, I guess, just do them in regular font. On page two.
Rosemary, can you repeat what you said, I didn't quite catch that.
The font, on page two, where they're just questions to follow along with our regular format of the minutes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I still can't hear what, what you're saying. On page two.
On page two.
Yeah.
Don't bold the font.
For the questions, you mean?
All right, change it, I don't care. I'm just one. And Ham, I did find something, Hambley wrote, Hambley is spelled incorrectly, is it not, Janice? On page three, for Richard St. Pierre.
Yes, it is, it, there's no E in Hambley.
Hambley.
Yeah.
I don't know, Janice, you're slipping. And I think, I don't know, is it Starlit or Starlight, what is it?
It's Starlit.
LIT?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, that's correct, it's weird, but it's correct.
Stu? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, as submitted.
We're, I think Rosemary is still looking to see if there's.
No, I just, I did read them, but I, I.
Okay, so, so we, so I think the only thing that we wanna do is change Hambley and drop the E out of Hambley, I think that's the only correction, so are you making a motion to approve the minutes with that one correction?
I make a motion to approve the minutes with that one correction of removing the extra E in Hambley.
And, and I will, I will second that motion, and I will also thank Ed for getting the minutes, your, Ed is getting better and better doing these minutes, so I, I spend less and less time proofreading them, so thank you.
You missed Hambley.
So I missed Hambley, I did, I, I always miss something, I'm a terrible proofreader. So, okay, we have a motion, a second, there's no further discussion, all those in favor, I believe it's unanimous, thank you. So that brings us to agenda item five C, which is an appointment of ad hoc technical review committee for the Boathouse Restaurant. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a little bit negative here, I think the TRC process is broken, I, I really think, now, we've been so busy, and we've been, we've been, we're short on staff, but I, I really think that we need to get notes or a summary of ad hoc TRC committee meetings to the board in plenty of time, so that the board can review that, because the whole purpose of a TRC is to, is to get the town's expertise, the expertise of, of people like fire and police and DPW, and to bring that to the attention of. that to the attention of the planning board so that we make better planning board decisions. And we're not getting that. Um, so again, um, uh, I, I'm, I'm bringing that to everybody's attention and I think we really need to look into this. Um, and maybe even put it on the agenda as an issue, uh, to discuss whether or not we should, uh, get away from the ad hoc and go to a regular appointed TRC with rules and regulations that have to be, uh, observed. Um, um, I, I don't know, but I, I, I don't want to drag my feet on appointing a TRC for the Boathouse Restaurant because I think that's a really good project. Um, and they came before us some months ago and they indicated that they would be back this summer. Um, so the sooner we get that appointed, the sooner Ashley can get it organized. Um, it would, it would be an Article 20 development plan review project, so it does require, uh, a TRC. And, um, so I will go ahead and recommend then that we have a TRC and that that TRC consists of, of the fire chief or his nominee, um, the, uh, and/or the fire marshal, the police chief or his nominee, uh, the DPW director, um, the building official. Um, who else? Ashley, am I missing that we need to mention?
Any planning board members?
At, at least one planning board member. Does anybody volunteer?
I'll volunteer.
Okay, so Rosemary wants to be on the Boathouse TRC and, um,
I think, if I may, having sat through the, uh, as an observer today, I think they're very beneficial if anybody can go and, and be an observer because there's a lot of good dialogue goes on with the department heads.
And, and Nathan needs to sit on that too. Should we, so we need to, we need, we need to appoint Nathan. And of, and of course Ashley is the chair as a, oh, she chairs it. So, but Nathan would be appointed as well. So, okay. So, um, does anybody else on the board wish to sit on it? Nope. I don't see anybody volunteering except Rosemary.
So just to your point, Stu, I, I don't disagree with you that there's a bit of dysfunction there in the way this gets organized. I think, you know, in my experience, I've sat with TRCs that are just a constituted board. They have a monthly meeting. If there's an application, they get it. They know that that calendar date is held. It happens every month. The applications get forwarded, the minutes or the notes come out of it and it's a standard, like, process and everyone has that on their calendar. What happened with Highland Builders, for example, was we attempted to hold it earlier. Somebody was on vacation or somebody wasn't available and we couldn't pull the board, the, the group together until today. And it was important to me to, I know, albeit late, but to get that review prior to them coming before you. So-
Right.
I would encourage you to consider that at your next meeting and to just constitute a TRC that's a standing board that has a monthly meeting. And if there are applications, it's just automatic and it will become part of the process as opposed to having you have to put it on an agenda to constitute them to, it just, it slows everything down and it causes that disruption and that sometimes, that inability to pull people together before the application is coming to you.
Right. But, but, but a regular, you know, but, but, but state law gives towns, um, the discretion to either appoint one or not appoint one. Um, but if a town chooses to have a TRC, not an ad hoc TRC, but a real TRC under state law, then, then the town has to come up with, uh, uh, policies and procedures.
Yes.
Um, and, um, so, so some work has to go into it. Some staff work has to go into it. But, and I'm not, and I'm not criticizing you or Ed. Um, I'm just saying that this has been a problem for a long, long time. Before you came along, we were having a big problem with TRCs.
And just so you're aware, I have reached out to other communities to ask for their documents.
Yes.
For their, whatever, however they were, organize it, whatever their rules and procedures are. And I have started searching for some of that information and I have-
That would be great.
Begun a draft. I just haven't gotten it far along enough yet to bring it to you.
Okay, okay.
I, I was just going to say, and I apologize because the acoustics are terrible, so I may be missing bits of what was just said, but, um, I think the, the gist of what Ashley was saying, I, I'm in full agreement with is having transparency and regularity. However, whether it be ad hoc or a standing committee or whatever the, the process is, would be helpful. I actually like participating in the TRC and as you know, I was going to participate in the one for Highland Builders on Friday, which was great because it worked in my schedule and then it got shifted, um, to today. So being able to have, uh, whether it's part of a regular, part of a process where we also know when it's going to fall, that would allow those of us who do want to participate, the, the, you know, just the ease of, of being able to plan for that. So whichever way we determine, whether it's ad hoc or formal, I just think having it be part of a regular process, as Ashley was saying, would be super helpful. Um, and then we can, we can plan for it and also it allows, it's the expectation on the part of the applicant that they know it's part of a process. So, um, and, and that seems to be more like the regular order of business that we should be pursuing. So I appreciate that.
So did, did, did we actually approve a motion to establish? No, we, we didn't do that. We, we named some names, um, but somebody has to second my motion and then we can vote.
Janice, do it.
Janice, Janice is seconding my motion-
No, Janice. Oh, okay.
For, for people to serve on the, but, ad hoc TRC for the Boathouse Restaurant. Right?
Right.
So, so, and, and, uh, so any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor? This is just creating the Boathouse TRC. Okay, thank you.
And I'm the member.
And, and Rosemary is the, is the planning board member. So that brings us to, um, agenda item five D, which is town council referral to the planning board. Um, what town council did is they, um, they would like to amend the zoning to remove, um, to remove reference to, uh, of the crematorium, to a crematorium being a permitted use. Um, in, uh, and, uh, and then they also wanted to, um, make sure that a crematorium is not a permitted use. I'm not sure I'm explaining it very, very well, but, but yeah, if you could, uh, summarize what they're doing.
The zoning ordinance is to strike the word crematorium from the district use table and then add as a prohibited use under section fifteen, crematorium.
Yeah. So, um, my, my, my concern about, about what we have been sent, and I think we all agree that, that the use table should be updated, not only with crem, with the removal of crematoriums, but a lot of other changes as well. But my concern here is, are we engaging in spot zoning? Are, are we, are we responding to a particular situation in our town? Um, and then, uh, we're taking a look, uh, at a specific issue and, uh, sort of, um, uh, closing the barn door after the horse has escaped. And, and I think the general term that people use is spot zoning. And, and I think it, it probably, it, it might, it, it might not be looked upon very favorably if we do get into litigation. Um, uh, you know, and, and it comes out that we're also, that the town is also engaged in this kind of thing. The, when we, when we update our zoning, we should do it in a thorough manner. We should take a look at our comprehensive community plan. We should take a look at, uh, infrastructure in the town of Tiverton, and then we should decide what goes where and what makes sense for use tables, not just with respect to crematorium because that's a political issue right now, but with respect to everything. I mean, that's just my view. I, I think that, I, I think that this is an example of spot zoning.
I think we've done that already though, still, you know, building the, you know, what we have in place right now. And I think you have to, um, do what you call spot zoning when something comes up. I don't think you have a choice. You're, you're going to miss something. It's not going to be perfect. And when something comes up, you correct it.
So I just want to clarify for the record that this would not be what is typically considered as spot zoning. Spot zoning is something where you have, uh, you know, a large residential area. You take a specific lot out of that area. You rezone that to something that is not consistent with the surrounding area. It's not a, a-
What do you, what would you call it? Is it a label that you put on what we're doing?
I, I, I mean, what I would call it is recognition that there's an incorrect, you know, in-
It's responding.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think you have to. Yeah, right. Okay.
Housekeeping.
It, it's not uncommon that, you know, you come across things in a zoning ordinance that until put into practice are not recognized as inappropriate or inefficient or whatever. And then when you, when it, when it is put into practice and you realize that it's not what you, the results are not what you wanted, you go in and you fix that and you amend it to correct that issue.
Well, I wouldn't have a problem, um, the way you explain it, I wouldn't have a problem with that, um, provided that it doesn't cause any complication, legal complications, um, in, in a lawsuit situation where a judge might say, oh, that, you know, there's, the town, the town is showing itself to be, um, you know, to be, to, to, you know, to be fixing a problem after the problem has occurred rather than doing it the correct way to begin with. But, um, but it, you know, if, if this doesn't, if this is not likely to cause any problems, then I don't see any problem with it. Um, except that some people might get the impression that, um, oh, we fixed zoning now, you know? Um, well, there, there are probably a score, uh, of changes that need to be made in the use table. Um, and this is just one of them. So I, I hope no one has the impression that, you know, by fixing the crematorium issue, we fixed our zoning or our use table.
I don't think it's that simplistic and I think people recognize it, Stu. This is an egregious oversight. It's just sort of like you have to amend the constitution from time to time where you don't have civil rights or the right to vote for women or, you know, I, I, it's really akin to that. So I, I don't see it's an issue. I don't think we need to concern ourselves unless our solicitor tells us about the legal implications if we're acting improperly. This is a normal correction of, of a terrible oversight. There's a lot of work yet to be done in the, the addressing the issues in our, in our code that we can still get to. But I, I think this would be viewed favorably as, as a, a proper step at this point. And it's beyond our authority anyway. The council has done it and, um, I for one think it's, it's great and I don't think it's a knee jerk reaction. I think it's taking appropriate action. So don't have something like this happen again. This, to me, is also similar to the issue we had with, uh, different code issues, but with seasons and, you know, not having districts be properly tracked. So-
Right.
So I, I think it's great. I don't think we should be fretting about it.
Okay, that's fine. So what, what does town council want us to do?
Give an opinion.
Well, your, your role in a zone change application that gets forwarded to you by the town council is to determine that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and that's it.
Stu?
Well, I, I-
We have to do this within forty-five days.
Yeah, so I, I, I would make a motion that we go ahead and, and-
Support the motion.
Support, support this as consistent with the comprehensive community plan. Um, that, I think is a no brainer. I think everybody would agree to that. Yes, Adam, did you?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Adam is seconding that. Yes, Tricia?
The acoustics are really bad. Could you repeat your motion for me so I can hear the whole thing?
So, so my motion would be to approve, um, the recommendation that was referred to us by town council as consistent with the comprehensive community plan. That's what we're supposed, that's what we're supposed to do.
So there's-
Yeah, we, we, Adam seconded it.
Some discussion.
So, and, um, any further discussion, hearing? Yes.
I, I do. I have, I am certainly in agreement that a crematorium is a use, for example, um, in, in the neighborhood business district or the pedestrian friendly district or any other residential zone is, you know, that, 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 that doesn't work, especially based on, I think, what we've come to understand, um, as far as the, the permitting process and air quality. I, I, I don't feel incredibly strongly about this, but, you know, a crematorium as a use is, I mean, it is something of a necessity, right? I mean, not, more and more people are choosing to be cremated and there's less and less land available for cemeteries. So I don't know whether or not the council's considered, um, something more akin to a temporary or short-term moratorium. I know that this solicitor's kind of cringed, but I'm going to say it anyway. Just to simply consider, well, you know, in industrial land, if it were set back a thousand feet or two thousand feet from any occupied structure, would that be as safe? I, I'm just saying there's, there's, there's a possibility that maybe if we did a little more research and had a little more understanding, and some of our fellow states, for example, Massachusetts and Connecticut and other states have set fairly stringent guidelines and setbacks, that maybe there could be an appropriate place for, for a use like a crematorium as opposed to an all-out ban. And so I just wonder if it might be possible to say that, you know, well, we support the council's idea, but we would also offer up the possibility that, that under the right circumstances with the right restrictions, maybe, we don't know the answer to this, but maybe one could safely exist somewhere in Tiverton. Just, I thought.
Well, we could, we could certainly pursue that when we are looking at a rewrite of zoning. Um, that and, and a number of other things as well. Um, but were, were you suggesting that we add that to the motion that we have now in our response to town council to say?
I, I, yes, that, that, that we're not unsupportive of their, 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 um-
That we find it consist, that their proposal is consistent with the comprehensive community plan?
With the community comprehensive plan. Um, but they might also consider whether or not blah, 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 blah.
The town should, the town should consider, which would be both the, the planning board and town council, um, uh, alternative places.
And whether or not we could, and, and whether or not that's, we're not assuming that there are alternative places, but with investigation, it's possible that there are.
So, okay, so that would be an amendment to, to my motion. Um-
How many, how many crematoriums do you need in?
Well, we've got, we've got one on Rock Street right now, which is not being used, but it could be. I mean, it could come back into use.
Right. Do you want to limit?
I don't know. What do the rest of you think? Should we, should this just be a clean, um, yes, uh, it's consistent with the comp plan? Or should we go on to add further language? I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other.
Well, I just have a question that maybe Ashley could, but I, I understand what Patricia's saying and I, I don't disagree, but I don't think that this is limiting the use in all of the, is, it's clearly outlining section nine in these zones. Uh, so I don't believe this is all of the-
But then I think it, it is, uh, it, it, it would prohibit anywhere in town, wouldn't it, any, any zone, what they've done.
Peter, it's only listed on section, in the district use table where it's identified in the proposed amendments. And then section fifteen is also amended to prohibit crematoriums throughout the town.
All right. That's the, the piece I missed then. Section fifteen.
So, and I think to, first of all, Ms. Gomes, you can't limit the number of crematoriums. It's, if they're allowed, they're allowed. It's, if they're allowed, they're allowed, however many come in, right?
Right.
And then to Ms. Hilton's point, I think what you're trying to do is suggest it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan in zones A through F, but might be consistent elsewhere in the industrial zone.
It, it, it's possible with cer- certain restrictions, things like significant setbacks from occupied buildings and other kinds of, um, safety measures, that it's possible that maybe it, it, it could be there. Could exist there.
And so I think what you're suggesting is limitations, limitations such as nude bars, for example. You often see those, right? Uh, strip bars have significant limitations as to where they can be, but are not outright prohibited.
We have an adult zone.
Exactly.
Okay, what, what do the rest of you think?
I'm only saying that the council might consider that in addition, you know, that in addition to a complete outright permanent ban anywhere, that maybe the council would want to consider that there is, there, there could be an alternative with investigation. That's all.
So, um, so we could, uh, we could put that into the motion. We, we do need to pass a motion tonight because we have forty-five days to respond.
Can I suggest a motion?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
The planning board finds that the proposed amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan. However, believes that there could be room for significant regulation akin to adult entertainment and that the town council should investigate that as an alternative. We can fix the wording some? No?
Does, does that sound okay?
Put adult entertainment in there.
It's, it's a good analogy.
Ashley, Ashley and Ed, did you get that?
I know.
Okay. Okay? Well, um-
Is that what you want, Trish?
Yeah, I, I, I think so.
Could your parents have asked that first?
I did. I actually heard that.
Yeah, now I think-
I was thinking about this in the room. Where to go? We're getting like every third word happened.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that that's, uh, I, I think that what you've suggested, Todd, is, is a good, a good solution. Uh, so I would, uh, I would make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a second. Uh, do we have any further discussion? We all know what we're doing here. We're not, um, we're keeping options open. Okay, those in favor? Okay, I think it's unanimous. Okay?
Who made the original motion, Stu?
I, I-
He amended it.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, Tricia. I, I think that's a good solution because, you know, I think, I think, I think things are a little more balanced now than they were. Okay. So that brings us to, um, Planning Office Projects Status Sheet and Office Updates. And, and here, can I just ask, um, Ashley and Ed, what's come in that we should know about? You know, what, what projects, um, you know, or even pre-application discussions that you may have had that we should know about? Just to, just so that we know what's coming down the road. Or, does it look like, does it look like the oncoming recession is, is damping down?
So I'm, I'm not aware of anything new, recent that's come in. We've had a couple of administrative subdivisions. I don't have any pre-apps for anything else.
Nope, we don't have any pre-applications. We haven't received any new applications for major land development or another DPR or anything like that. Administrative subdivisions, um, that we have. And we also have the, the applications like Icoji Energy-
The solar.
The solar.
But that's not new.
That's, no, that's not new.
Okay.
But-
Um, does anybody else have any questions about what's going on in the planning office?
I know. I see activity across from the Black Goose. I forgot the name of it, where the, it's Manchester Seafood used to be. But there seems to be more activity over there near, maybe Christine knows.
My neighbors.
They're doing, they're doing a lot of work. I didn't know if you had, heard anything.
I'm not a-
It's at the fish market.
I'm not aware of anything?
Okay. No, we had denied it or whatever, but-
No, nothing from there.
Nothing?
Okay.
Colbea has, has that requested to be, to be put on the agenda for June?
On our agenda?
Correct.
Colbea. June.
On the remand from the zoning board review.
So Ashley and Ed, or anything else under Planning Office Projects Status Sheet and Office Updates?
We are working. Ashley helped me develop a new submission deadline for the, uh, the application. So, um, we had to adjust it to account for advertising and notification to, you know, the others.
Yeah.
So now it's gonna be, I think it's six weeks out instead of three to give us time because if you have to get the other bodies out and have the, get that advertising out in time, it actually has, you know, time to review the application. So, but, but we, Ashley wouldn't be able to turn around the application in time for us to get the advertising out from the previous.
Jeez. All I did was turn it on.
But don't we need to amend our subdivision regulations to put that into effect?
So there's, I don't believe there's anything-
Thing in your subdivision regula, I don't like that. I don't believe there's anything in your subdivision regulations-
Yep.
-that would prevent us from adjusting an office policy for submission deadlines? The, the problem that we keep running into is there's a three-week cutoff date to submit for the next agenda. And there's an assumption that if I get in the day before that, that date, I'm off, like, I'm gonna be on that agenda and there's no- I don't even know who's not. Can you just bring the microphone in close, please? I'm not using it.
But it keeps making noises at me. There's a, an assumption that when you submit, that you're automatically on that next agenda. And the problem is, is that it's not accounting for the fact that I, in most cases, depending on the type of application, have anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five days to review it and certify it complete. And so if I don't review it, like, immediately as soon as it comes in the office, I can't get it on the next agenda. And I also, if it requires advertising, we can't get it advertised in time. So instead of continuing to have this circular conversation with applicants, like, why didn't I get on the agenda? We're backing up the submission deadline so that we get them earlier. We can account for the certification time. We can account for the, the time required for advertising, and we can streamline the process more. They're gonna have to get used to the fact that they're gonna need to submit earlier. But it's not the first time I've thrown something at them that they weren't doing before that maybe they won't like. So they're getting accustomed to, to, to that. And I'm hoping that it improves the flow of the application and the ability to get it reviewed, get a memo out, get it advertised so that it does come on an agenda, you know, after it's submitted.
Right, but doesn't that need to be part of our subdivision regulations?
No. It's an office policy.
It's an office policy, okay. That's fine. Um, and I think it's a good one, so congratulations for doing that. Anything else under this agenda item? Anything else anybody has to ask? No? Okay, so, um, General Assembly Legislative Updates relative to planning. We have all kinds of things going on.
We have all kinds of things going on. Do you want me to bring it closer or further away? Um, the, there is a, as you know, and we've discussed this before, there's a housing package from the Speaker's Office. We are, the Planning Association has been working closely with the Speaker's Office and providing comments and alternative language for some of the bills that have come out. They are in the process of working on sub-As for those bills. To this point, they have taken a lot of our suggested language. We, at this time, have a very positive working relationship with them. I am not naive to think that if we come to an impasse at some point, they are gonna move on regardless. But so, for now, we are working together. Um, they are taking our input and they are making, you know, changes. And, and that is being reflected in sub-As. There is no doubt, at least with what the House intends to pass, that there will be required changes at the local level to zoning and subdivision. It remains to be seen what the Senate is gonna do because they have not introduced at this point any companion bills for any of the Speaker's package. So we, we don't know what's gonna happen. The Senate has been relatively quiet due to the passing of a prominent senator and to the, um, Senate President having some minor health issues. So they, they haven't been that active. I, we don't know whether or not the reason that there is no companions at this point is because of that or for other reasons. We just have to wait it out and see what happens. But we're hoping that we also, if, you know, if we can't come to an agreement on the House bills with the Speaker's staff, that there will be a second opportunity to at least meet with and discuss the changes that may not have gotten implemented into the Senate bill. Um, and then at some point, those two things come back together and have to get rectified and go to the floor. But that's basically the update of where we are right now.
Thank you. Any questions about that?
I have a question for Ashley. Ashley, are you, um, can you let us know if, if, if you need us as a municipality? If you think it's time for the municipality, whether it's the council to take a position on something or, um, it's time for bodies to go up, you know, to the General Assembly and be there for committee meetings and, and, you know, let us know when and if we need to step in and help?
I, I certainly will. I mean, there was an, an initial response from some communities. There was a, a resolution that kind of went around and got tweaked at each location and kind of changed that did, did go up there. I think it was probably premature, although I understand the initial concern. But like I said, right now, they are being relatively receptive to the suggested language changes that we're coming up with. You know, we are approaching this in a way where we've recognized, like, something's gonna change. And so we need, we are strategically picking our battles. And we have not gone over, I would say, the most concerning of the bills up that are out right now. That happens next week. I'm hoping that we can continue to collaborate and that we can each kind of move in a direction towards each other. But, um, I, I, you know, I do recognize that they, they don't have to take our position, in our opinion. I'm hoping that it doesn't come to the point where municipalities need to jump in and say, you know, this is not okay. But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to think that there isn't going to be change from these bills. There will be change. Right now, so far, I think it's change that we feel like we can live with. We haven't gotten to the, to the point where we, we feel like it's, it's gonna be really problematic. But it will, there will be changes.
Okay. Okay, if that's all on that item, um, Status of Zoning Code Rewrite. Ashley, didn't the town council create a committee? Or discussed creating a committee?
They dis, I believe they discussed it. I believe the solicitor is drafting a resolution for that that'll be on the agenda Monday evening. They, I believe they selected positions, not necessarily people, um, but positions. I think it's an eleven-member board. And some of those positions are members of the general public. Um, so they will have to ask for people to apply for that. I believe it's, and please don't quote me on this, two planning, two zoning, one EDC. That's five. There was, there was a few others. Um, I don't recall them off the top of my head, but it is a total of eleven. Um, so we're waiting at this point for that to get finalized and for people to request to be placed on, on the committee. But so, just so that you're aware, um, the town, you know, signed a contract with Weston and Sampson. We have actually had an, an internal meeting to kick off the project. We are gonna start auditing the zoning ordinance. I spoke with John today. He's gonna get me a list. He and I are gonna walk through that list, and we're gonna start to, you know, section by section, go through the zoning ordinance as well as the subdivision regulations. We want to, as soon as that committee is, is formed, we want to have something to start working with them. So we are getting started.
Ashley, does the committee have a title?
Officially, I'm sure it does. Zoning, zoning update? I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Okay, so the next thing on, on our agenda is appointment of a planning board member to serve on the newly-created Tiverton North End and Industrial Business Park Subcommittee. And, um, this is, this is a, uh, this is a committee that the town council established. And, um, they're advertising now for, um, for just general, members from the general public. But they do specify that one member of it be a planning board member. So does anybody wish to volunteer to be a member of this committee? They do have a fairly large budget of over a hundred thousand dollars.
Stu, I know Amanda had expressed interest if that, if, if this committee, if this board was gonna be put together, and she's not here. I think she probably deserves an opportunity to reject or deny, you know, a possibility of being on the board. And if, if she doesn't, you know-
Okay, let's, let's put this item on, on the agenda for June.
Continue.
Uh, continue it to the June meeting, and maybe Amanda will be here then. And, uh-
They had no one, no one volunteered from the public. I did go to the meeting last Monday night, but left early. But they were very disappointed that no one from up there could, you know, volunteer from citizen.
So, so that, so if there are no further questions or comments about that, that brings us to the final agenda item, which is Planning Board Website Proposed Updates. And I'm gonna turn this one over to Christine because she put together a mock-up of our, of a possible website, planning board website, that would be a big improvement over what we have now. So Christine?
Yeah, so, um, a few months ago, I had asked if we could take a stab at reorganizing the website just to be a little more user-friendly and, um, give more information to the public. I took a stab at that and handed it over to people smarter than me to review and edit. So that's kind of where we are with that. And the biggest thing is to add, I believe it's called Clerk Base, in order to have all of our projects and all of the information up on the website so that the public can look at it and have all the stuff that we have. I think it also helps us because then that's a place that we can go for all of the information. So I think it's being reviewed by Stu and Todd and Ashley, and that's the status.
Okay, so I think, um, suggest that we keep, continue this on our June agenda. Okay, so I think, suggest that we keep, continue this on our June agenda as well, and that will force us to actually do our review.
I would appreciate that because of all the material we got for the crematoriums so late and the memos, I have not really, but excellent. I glanced through it. Christine, thank you.
Yeah, it looks like a huge improvement. Okay, so I guess that's the final agenda item. Does anybody wish to make a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a privileged motion to adjourn at nine twenty-five.
Wow.
No second is necessary.
We are adjourned.